We will begin with the Pledge Allegiance and an invocation by Reverend Bruce Baxter of the United Methodist Church. He is the district superintendent in Cape Girardeau. Please welcome Reverend Baxter. Thank you.
Thank you. Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this day. Lord, we want to go on record as thanking you for Mondays. We thank you for all that's happened today, for the people we've seen, the work we've done, the things we've considered. And we pray that you'd be present tonight as this body deliberates on the matters that it is responsible for. We give you thanks for the elected officials of Cape Girardeau, for the city staff. We give you thanks for our emergency responders and all the great city workers who do the details and the work to make this a wonderful place to live and to work. So we pray you continue to guide us. We give you thanks for the ways in which you have led us this far. We pray for tonight's business, those who will be speaking, and for the decisions that are being made, that they will be fair and equitable. We thank you, Lord, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have no study sessions tonight. We do have several presentations. First, we have the recognition of Mr. Randy Hubel for his retirement from the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a few comments for him. Mr. Hubel, if you will come forward. We're going to brag on you for a minute here. Well, Randy Hubel retired from the City of Cape Girardeau Parks and Recreation Department on January 23, 2023. He began his career with the Parks Maintenance Division in 1994 and has been a dedicated City of Cape employee for 28 years. Randy's main duties were keeping the parks and downtown area free of trash and maintaining trash receptacles within our many city parks and in the downtown area. Randy checked and emptied 178 trash receptacles on a daily basis throughout the city. Is that? That's what it says. I believe it. Oftentimes, Randy would work six or seven days a week, making sure the trash in the parks and downtown area was managed. Randy was very dedicated to his job. He also assisted with other department projects as needed. Randy is also a history buff and has a lot of historical knowledge about the city of Cape Girardeau. His presence in the Parks Maintenance Division will be missed. Thank you, Randy, for your many, many years of service to the City of Cape Girardeau Parks and Recreation Department and to the citizens of Cape Girardeau. And please enjoy your retirement. It's well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Take a bow. This is your moment. Yeah. We have a plaque for him that basically spells all that out. We just, again, thank you so much. Would you like to say something before you?
No, just thank you for all you've done.
Well, you've blessed the city. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
178 a day?
That's incredible.
That is a lot. All right, next, we will have a presentation by the Cape Girardeau County Transit Authority and its director, Mr. Tom Moglenicki. I will say, this, I believe, is the second of our presentations, the first being the Humane Society, where we have, the city has contracted partners that do the work of the city, that the city staff is not doing itself, and we, as a council, wanted to hear from all of those organizations this spring. So tonight is the CTA. Welcome.
Well, thank you for inviting us to do a presentation. All facts and figures in detail will be my staff, Kelly Watson and Susan Redford. You know, Cape County Transit was established to provide safe, reliable, efficient, and cost-effective transportation services in the city of Cape Girardeau and the county. I've been with Cape County Transit for 16 years now. Mark Bliss says when you're going to retire. Well, it won't be too long, and I probably will. It's been a struggle the last two years, and you guys have the same problem. You can't find people to work. In order to get them, you got to pay them more, and it's been hard on our budget. You know, COVID has been hard on us because nobody wanted to ride. They were afraid to ride. So the federal government required us to have masks for all the visitors, or participants, and gloves, and we did that for almost three years. But we survived it, and we were lucky because I don't think we only had a half a dozen of our drivers get sick because of it. We have a budget issue, which, that's another thing Mark Bliss says, well, you want more money. Of course, we want more money. Who doesn't? In the last 10 years, we've gone from a $2 million budget to a $4 million budget. That's doubling, and part of it is the expenses that everybody's getting in the last two years. We burn around 8,000 gallons of fuel a month, and when it goes from $1.50 up to $3.50, our cost is enormous. Insurance prices keep going up, wages keep going up, cost of vehicles. We just got in two new vehicles finally after nine months of ordering vehicles. We got two vehicles. We need eight to 10 vehicles every year replacement. You can't find them. You can't buy them at any price. But these two vehicles that we just got last Friday, which we normally paid $40,000 a vehicle, we're now paying like $65,000 a vehicle. That's $25,000 more. Now, we do get subsidies for that, but we also have to have match to offset those subsidies. The federal government requires us to have matching funds to get any of the funding, whether it's for vehicles or salaries or insurance or any of that stuff. So we have to have matching funds that has to be given to us from the cities and the county. The state has to provide us with matching funds, and some of the projects we have is matching funds. But we don't use and can't use any kind of income off of charging the customers for the rides. They do not allow us. If the riders may pay us $5, but none of this can be used for matching funds. We have to subtract that from the funding request, and it doesn't make sense, but that's the way the law is. That's what the federal government requires. In the 10 years where we doubled our budget, just bringing this up for information, we received X number of dollars in both cities and the county and haven't gotten a dime more from them. I'd like the city council to be thinking about, I know you can't give us a whole lot of money at one time, but maybe the possibility of increasing our budget by 10% every year, and then the hit wouldn't be so bad because everything's going to keep going up. You guys know it keeps going up. Everything you do keeps going up. I know you hate to hear us keep asking you for money, but if the public is going to be satisfied with our ridership, we have to increase the number of people driving, which costs us more, dispatchers, our vehicles, our insurance, our maintenance on our vehicles. But we need help in our partners, and you guys are partners with us, and you have been for 16 years. All we need is some help, and I'm going to ask for the same thing from the county and City of Jackson and the state of Missouri. Finally, the state has come up with some more money for us. It's the first time in how many years? Six, seven? Close to 10 years that they've increased our funding. They took away 10 years ago our funding away, but just recently, Barry Hobus, and he's part of it, he's helped us get more funding through the whole state for matching funds to get from the federal government. We have all kinds of money that we could receive from the federal government if we have the matching funds to get it, and we don't have the matching funds. I don't know how much we left on the table last year, $300,000 because we don't have the matching funds. That's a lot of money just sitting there, and if you don't apply for it because you don't have the matching funds, eventually you lose it. I think it's a three-year period. If you don't apply for it because you don't have matching funds, you lose it. Again, we need help from our partners on this. So I don't know where we need to go from here and how to ask for more money, but we could sure use it. Now, Kelly Watson is our account manager, which she's going to talk a little bit about it, too, and Susan Redford is in charge of our employees and the policy procedures that we have. They'll have more details and facts and figures if you needed them. And then if you have any other questions, I will return to the podium and answer them, or if there's any now.
So there are different programs that we have at Cape County Transit. One thing that we get funding from the City of Cape for are our fixed route bus service that we provide. We have approximately 54 stops throughout the city of Cape. It operates Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and right now, all of those rides are absolutely free. We started that in April of '21?
Twenty?
COVID. And we've just kept it free this whole time, trying to help improve ridership and help the community out as much as we can. We also have our on-demand service. It's kind of like the taxi service. It focuses the entire county of Cape, really. We do go beyond that. Whenever we look down here at the Medicaid Transportation, we go everywhere from St. Louis to Kennet to everywhere, whenever they need us to. We also have a workforce transportation program. We pick up at a few different locations throughout the city of Cape and take people to Proctor and Yambel for work, and then also Gilster, Mary Lee. We have programs that we get money from the Senior Board, Aging Matters, and the SB40 Board, and that does count as match money, like Mr. Tom was just talking about. The Senior Coupon Program, anyone over 60 years of age qualifies, and they simply pay $4 for a coupon, and that gets them anywhere in the county. With Aging Matters, it's a program. It provides free transportation, but it's only to select locations, doctor's appointments, grocery store, pharmacy, or the senior center. Again, they have to be 60 years of age or older or have a disability that prevents them from being able to drive. That program has continued to grow over the years. The SB40 program, it's for the developmentally disabled. There is a short application process that they have to go through, but it provides them coupons at $2 apiece, and those will take them anywhere in Cape County except a select, a few select locations, bars, the casino, places like that. But any number of people can ride with them, too. It's an amazing program. And then again, the Medicaid Transportation, that is a contract that we have with a company. And they send us trips. We don't really have anything to do with who qualifies for that and who doesn't, but all of those count as match money for us. In your handout, we gave you a spreadsheet. It's the total ridership numbers, and it kind of goes over everything. One thing that may not make sense, it says JARC. That's the ride-to-work program. Other than that, the demand response, you have rural and urban, so that's just whether it's in town or not. The bus riders, that, those numbers are specifically for the people who ride that bus service that's free. I don't know if you guys have any questions about any of that. Don't be.
There you go. Demand, response, trips, urban, I'm assuming those are all in-city limits, and they're paying, they're either paying with their coupon or they're paying cash?
Yeah, these are total numbers.
Okay, total numbers. They're all on 10.
So the urban area basically encompasses the area that's covered by the MPO. Whenever we were designated as a small urban area with the 2010 census, and then the rural would be your trips, basically in the county.
And then, Tom, quick, whenever we're saying we've had a partnership for going on our, in our documents, it's 110,000 annually has been that, but then in 2017, we did the fixed bus route and altered that relationship, or has that always been fixed route?
It's always been the fixed route.
Okay. So I'm a little confused on why, because I think that, I think it goes back further than 2017. We were given an ordinance from, that was signed anew in 17, but it actually goes back further than that. Okay. My questions?
I will say, I've been with CTA since 2012, and I know that the relationship with the funding from the City of Cape for the bus service predates that.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, even since I've been on council, we had the downtown trolley. We added that at one point in time.
That was in 2017.
Okay, so then that's where this document's from as part of the trolley. It was an amendment to the original agreement, which is this. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I have a question. Do you, I don't know. I know you guys are working on certain things. Do you know how many more are in need of transportation for our city? You know, the question, more funding. What is the need for that funding for the service of those that need it? That's one. The second question, who determines the hours, 8 to 4, as like the fixed bus ride hours? Is that based off staff, or is it just a chosen time?
So before the fixed bus service operated 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and then I think it was 8 to 6 on Saturday, the ridership just hasn't been there. So it didn't make sense for us to continue to run a service when no one was using it.
And that big change in ridership happened with COVID. When the, with the onset of COVID, we saw a very sharp decrease in the ridership on the fixed bus route.
And we kept it the same until April of this year. April 1st was?
Of '22.
Oh, of '22, yeah. Is whenever we cut those hours back.
So what is the highest demand of your transportation services that you have that people need, that you would like more funding for?
Our on-demand service, like the taxi-type service, I mean, there are days right now, and I know Tom kind of hit on it, trying to hire enough people to meet the demand of the city. There are times during certain days of the week where someone might have to wait two hours in order to get a cab. Yeah, so especially Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, because we have a lot of dialysis patients, and I don't want to say that we give priority to anyone, but they have to get to dialysis. Those are life-sustaining treatments that they have to have. So we always try to make sure that we get them there for their treatment on time. But outside of that, if you just call for a cab meeting and go to Walmart, a lot of times on those three days a week, you might wait a couple of hours.
Thank you. So on the question of like the bus ridership, we're looking at the numbers from fiscal year 2023, but pre-COVID, what might those numbers have looked like? Is that in this packet? I didn't see it.
It is not in the packet. I do not have that.
It's about 25% more. We're down probably 25% over the last couple of years. We're seeing it pick up again, but it's been slow. But we can't find personnel to hire to put them in a position to drive. And that's in dispatcher. We have to have dispatcher every day, and we have to find that, too. Personnel stuff.
Ms. Randall, I'd like to circle back to one of your questions. The one about you asked how we determine who's most in need. We've been doing more public outreach as best we can. We've been partnering with United Way. As you know, we were at the Porch meeting a few months back. So that's one thing that we're doing to try to determine what the public's needs are and what people are wanting in the way of transit services. Also, we have about 50% ridership that are senior citizens that are reliant on us. These are people lots of times that are not able to drive or don't want to drive. And then we also are seeing a large uptick in the need and request for assistance with workforce transportation. A lot of people want to go to work, but they don't have the means to get there. And that's one of the places that I feel like there is a gap as far as assistance within the community to help those people at least get a foot in the door and get started earning a paycheck so that they can eventually become self-sufficient and either purchase their own transportation through CTA or, you know, their own vehicle. But we have a lot of people that come to us looking for assistance for that type of thing as well.
So would you say that the on-demand and the senior and the workforce rides have been increasing, but the bus ridership has been decreasing?
The on-demand is trending upward from where it went down from COVID, but we're still not back to our pre-COVID numbers.
But the senior rides and the workforce are?
Well, senior rides, we used to do even a higher percentage of senior rides than the 50%. That's based on current numbers from our current fiscal year, that 50% number. A lot of seniors also changed their travel patterns with COVID. Seems like a lot of them don't get out as much. You know, now we have Walmart delivery, you've got DoorDash, that kind of stuff. So there is a trend where I think some seniors are not getting out as much, but it is still a significant number of people of our clients. It's a significant proportion of our clientele.
Can you, Mr., would you mind coming to the podium?
A lot of people don't understand, because I get the question all the time, can I ride CTA? Anybody can ride CTA. I don't care if you're five years old or 90 years old. CTA is there to provide transportation for anybody, whether they're visiting or whoever it is. And I don't know why, I don't know what we can do to promote that. We've tried with Facebook and the internet and our webpage, but a lot of people ask me two or three times, can I ride on CTA? We even have transportation to the airport in St. Louis. You know, we lost Bart, so we kind of started doing that. So you can ride CTA to the airport, and we'll pick you up at the airport. It's $200, but it's not a bad price. If there's three people that go at one time, it's only $3 a person extra. So if it's three people, it's $206. So we have it available if people want to do it. So availability is for everybody, just not the people we're talking about.
Now, I'm the accounting manager, as Tom said, so I'm going to bore you with some numbers and some math here. One of your handouts details the local match and our annual operating expenses for the last several years. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. You can see that our budget has almost doubled over that time span and that our funding from our local partners has pretty much stayed the same. So it's always a battle for me as an accountant to, how are we going to have match to do this, to do this, to do this? So that's one of the things that I work at. But then I think Tom also mentioned about the fares. There's another handout, the one that has the little boxes on it. The first example shows where if we had $20,000 in fares, we have to take that off of, deduct that from our total expenses, and that leaves what FTA refers to as a net operating loss for the period. And generally speaking, we're eligible for 50% funding from FTA for our operations, but that, as Tom mentioned, requires that we have local matching funds in the other 50%. So then in example two, in that example, because a lot of times people say, well, why don't you just raise your fares? Well, we did, and it, but it disproportionately affects a lot of the people who use our service that are low income. They're paying a higher fare whenever they're already struggling. But whenever the fares go up by 10,000 for the general public, then that reduces the local match amount by 5,000, and it also reduces the amount we get from FTA by 5,000. And then just the opposite is the case in example three, where if you reduce fares, the riders pay $10,000 less, but we need an additional $5,000 in local match money to cover our costs. So public transit was never designed to, for small urbans like Cape Girardeau, to use fares only to fund their operations. That's just not the way the government designed it. And then the other handout, I believe, that one gives you, it gives you several years' worth of our fares, and then I detailed out the four biggest items on our expenses, which are wages, fuels, repairs, and maintenance to vehicles, and insurance. And those numbers have continued to rise. And then at the bottom, I show our average hourly wage comparing 2017 to 2023. There's a nearly 60% increase in hourly wages that we're paying our drivers, our dispatchers, the guys that clean the vehicles. Part of that is in response to the minimum wage increase that was voted by the state of Missouri, and part of that is trying to be competitive in a market to get drivers so that we can provide the services that the citizens of Cape Girardeau County need. So it is a constant battle between, you know, how much do we charge the public? How much can we, how much can we count on our partners for that will allow us to draw those federal funds? And it's all very tightly intertwined. So if we don't have enough money to cover operating costs, then that means either we have to have more local match, we have to increase fares and the cost to the public, or we have to cut services. That's just the, that's the simple math of it. And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions about all that fun stuff and all those fun numbers?
Just a real quick question. When it comes to like your bus ridership, is there a certain time of the day that seems to be utilized more often than others? Do you guys have sort of a ride-to-work time of the day that it gets really busy and then it tapers off, or is it pretty standard across the board?
It's pretty standard across the board, honestly. I mean, some stops, the ridership is much higher. We have some stops that have zero people who ride all month long. It would be, and that's one thing that we did recently do, was try to rework.
It would be, and that's one thing that we did recently do was try to rework that so that we can eliminate some stops that are not used, hoping to be able to add stops somewhere else. And we've reached out to United Way and that Transportation Coalition. I'm trying to find out where they would like to see bus stops added so that we can help the people better.
Thanks, honey.
In closing, I just want to bring up one more thing. The building that we're at now, the Medical Arts Building, Dr. Sauer passed away. They've got it up for sale and we rent our spot. We, we don't own our spot. In the near future, we're, we're looking for a piece of ground and somebody to build the building. We're going to have to have it if we're going to survive. Well, projective cost on this whole project is about four to $5 million. Again, that's going to take match. Federal government will pay 80% of that cost, but we'll have to come up with 20%. So in the near future, we're going to go to the partners and try to help us. We've got some money saved for it, but we're, we're going to have to have money towards this new building. So that's something just to be thinking about. We're looking at pieces of property and we have to go through all kinds of loops with the federal government. And if you know how dealing with them is, is a nightmare. We'll get there though. It's just going to take time and, and money. So any questions on any of that?
I, I had one question and you may have said it and I may have missed it and I apologize if that's the case. But when you have a $4 billion total expenditure budgeted and you have about 200,000 between the local support and matching funds with 600 in total fares and coupons, it's a little over a million. What's your primary funding source? Yeah, and what covers that difference between the one point whatever and the $4 million of expenditures?
Okay, so when Susan was talking about some of the programs that we offer, we receive funding from the Senior Board, the SB40 Board, Aging Matters, and then also the Medicaid Transportation. We are allowed to count the money that we collect from that contract towards local match as well.
Gotcha. I just was.
That's probably close to a million dollars.
Yeah, like I said, in order to meet, you know, to break even on your budget, you'd have to have some funding somewhere. Yeah, thank you.
I, I have one more question as well. I know you had mentioned that there was approximately $300,000 in federal grant money, but you would need a match. So if, if your local support from County Commission, City of Cape, City of Jackson is 190, if you, are you saying if you had 300,000 that you could get 300,000 from the federal government?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're asking the City of Cape to increase their contribution 10%, but really it would require more than that?
Well, all our partners are behind in their contributions. And we've, we've been lucky so far. Actually, COVID was kind of good for us. COVID, and you got some of this money too, Art. We were able to pay for a lot of our costs through COVID. The government's given us 100% money without a match for the last two years, but that's all gone. So we're kind of starting from square one and we're just going to need in the future more help. And I was thinking if we could start at a 10% increase from all our partners, we could make it work. Until we get to the building, I'm going to need more than 10%. But, but it'll be one time shot. It won't be something to have to do every year, but it, it'll, it'll be tough building this building for four or $5 million.
Thank you.
I, I would just have a comment. Tom, I'm sorry, I forgot your names. Thank you for everything. I know you've been at it this for a long time. You were one of the founding, you were right on the ground floor whenever this CTA started. And if I annualize our bus routes, that's basically $8.81 for every rider is what our, that cost of that $110,000 that we're spending. And I can't get an Uber from here to Mary Janes for $8.81. So I do see the value that you all provide in that fixed route. I know that councilperson Randall had talked about, you know, what do we need to do to maybe alter some of those spots? Remember you'd kind of mentioned that before for, for different places in the ward? So I would like to see some of that, but appreciate everything that you all do and, and thank you.
I had a few questions unless, Mark, did you? Okay. Mr. Mogul Nicky, I know we've, we've been in a number of meetings together in the past six months. I know you've, you've all have graciously met with us and staff. Dr. Haskin and I had some, had some questions. There, you've, we've discussed some of these issues with some other regional leaders. There have been a number of transportation meetings. I know the United Way has put on at the porch meeting, but then, you know, other meetings as well, a lot of information gathered. And it's all because they're really, especially in the City of Cape. As you know, we, we've been hearing a lot of concern about the services specifically, and you've touched on some of them, but you know, the schedule, the, the, what's the word? The reliability of the schedule and, and of the, you know, the pickups and, and things like that. The, the ease or, or lack of ease that people might have in getting from one part of town to the next. The number of stops, the locations of the stops, the staffing, the, the marketing. You, you touched on that as well. And so my question is, again, I, I would actually put this topic as, as one of the, one of the larger ones that I've spent personally, spent some time in the last six months digging into and hearing about and, and having meetings for. So what, what discussions have you had with, with your board? And, and in terms of making some, you know, hearing community concern and, and making improvements? Where, where are some things that you can point to that we've, we've seen some of that?
A lot of concerns that come are semi-legitimate, you know?
Meaning they're semi-not legitimate also?
I didn't say that. You know, when you go, you go to pick up an elderly couple in a house, and this is, this happens many times. They call and they want to ride at 8:30. We go to pick them up and honk the horn. They don't come out. We go knock on their door and they finally after five minutes will come to the door. Well, I'm not ready, I'm not dressed. They scheduled the timing at 8:30. Well, a lot of times during the day, especially between six and nine o'clock and maybe two and six o'clock, we're rushed to pick up people. They all want to go somewhere and be picked up at that. A lot of times those people that are complaining about this, it's not our fault. Some of them are, some of them are because we don't have the staff and we don't have the vehicles. It's been so tough to get vehicles. Just, I mean, we've been waiting two years for vehicles that we ordered and you can't, we can't get them. Ford Motors had a contract with the state of Missouri, which we buy a lot of our vehicles off the state of Missouri contract. When was it, six months ago or something? Just canceled the contract. They had a contract, a, a written contract and you just cancel it. Well, we can't provide them anymore. And we were scheduled to get like six of those vehicles. Well, sorry, you're out of luck. Well, you can't pick up people if you don't have the, the vehicles to pick them up in or the drivers to drive them. Whose fault is that? I, I don't know. But there, there's times, and Susan, there's two-hour wait sometimes. Well, we're just that busy. And even if we had more drivers, we'd have to have a lot more to keep up with that schedule.
How, how many vehicles do you have right now?
How many?
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
And you're using them all?
Yes.
And half of them are wore out because we can't get them replaced. We've got one sitting there that's got a blown engine or transmission or someone's using for parts.
Well, I guess my question is, I mean, I, I think everyone can understand. We all know that gas prices are increasing. I think everyone probably in this room has in some way dealt with staff issues and, and, you know, all those things that you're dealing with as well. I guess the question is, how are you adapting?
Well, that is one thing, how I mentioned that we are trying to figure out better places for bus stops. If the people would just tell us, we would be more than happy to do it. Having said that, we can't put a bus stop somewhere because one person wants it, right? We did, Kelly and I, we printed out this huge map of our bus route and took it to the Porch Initiative and a lot of other meetings, asking people, just place a pin, where do you want a bus stop? We can, we hear it, but we don't see it. No one actually says, we have 20 people that would like to see a bus stop here. It, we, if you would tell us, we will be happy to do it. We've made a lot of staffing changes internally to help with the complaints that we've had. We are doing everything that we can, that we know of, that we can directly do something to make something better. You know?
We'll work with you guys, but we have to have legitimate information to work with. Okay, we need more bus stops. Where?
Yeah.
Just don't say I need more bus stops. You need to be on time more. Well, we can be if we have more drivers and more vehicles. Whose fault is that? I don't know.
Everyone would like to call and have a ride there in 15 minutes too.
Yeah, we can't do it. Nobody can. And I'll tell you, we're not the only transit provider in the state of Missouri. Oats, which is the biggest rural transfer provider, they're 100 drivers short. They're 100 drivers short. St. Joe was, was saying there, they normally have 20 drivers and they're short five or six drivers and can't find them.
Well, so what are, what are you doing to deal with that problem?
Well, that's another battle that we have. You know, we've started a sign-on bonus, trying to reel people in a little bit more. I hired seven new drivers this week. 50% of those will stick and I just lost three last week. So do the math, I'm back at zero pretty much, you know? So it's a constant battle. I just need people to come to work and be on time. And that would be a lot of my problems would be solved.
We're trying. And if you have any ideas for us, we'll be happy to listen to you.
Well, I, I know, and I've heard you say that, you know, numerous times and I, I appreciate that. I guess my, my point is, you know, it's not, I see that as, as, as your job to figure out and to provide, you know, the, the services that, that our city wants. And I appreciate all the different, you know, things that you do offer. Certainly those are all valuable. I'm not, I'm not trying to say one is, one aspect is more, you know, important than the other. I just know especially the fixed bus route here in Cape, there have been, I've, I've heard repeatedly and, and I know you all have heard repeatedly, you know, what the, what the concerns are.
And we did make staffing changes, as I mentioned earlier. The two bus drivers that we had previously for years are no longer there. We have new bus drivers, one of which takes his very seriously to the minute. So we have made changes. Everything that we hear, like I said, we do try to make changes. And Kelly has worked hard to reach out to different organizations in the community, trying to get more detailed feedback so that we can make changes in relationship to exact problems. And Ms. Shatton, what United Way is going to be presenting to our board, the findings from the surveys that were done. That's at our upcoming board meeting. So that's part of where we'll be looping our board members in more at that point. We had to wait to get some of the data before we can go to our board members and have that conversation. So that, we're taking the steps. Unfortunately, it's taking longer than what we would like for it to, but that's just the way it is. It takes time to put all this together. Whenever we're also, we're all trying to also operate the business and manage the business, but also to deal with the issues that the public is, is wanting us to address. Yeah, our drivers passed out those surveys to every customer. I mean, we did everything that we could to get better information. Twenty-something of them back? After a week's worth of passing them? After a week of sending them out to every rider. We got 20. So you know, we hear that we, they want better service and different things, but whenever we ask, what, tell us a little bit more about what you want so that we know how to move forward. We're trying, I promise.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with questions?
Just a word of caution. When you talk about certain groups of people, it's important to have a different diverse method of communicating. That's important, you know? I mean, I'm just saying, you say you do surveys. Sometimes it's like, can you, can I talk to you? Can you answer these questions, make sure they circle and so they write? But sometimes it's the approach and sometimes the, the people that we continue to talk to, we talk to the same people. The people ride, they already ride and they, they kind of find what they, but it's the, it's the different. And I'm just, just sharing a word of caution. I mean, I had an opportunity to partner with you all and sit at the meeting that we had with United Way. So just, this word of caution, when you want to work with certain groups of people, sometimes you have to make sure certain groups of people look like you to feel comfortable enough to trust, to give you an answer why I should do this and why I shouldn't do that, or is this important to me or not important to me? That's just, that's just my just thought on that.
And they did the surveys at, it was at the OSH, Project Hope.
Why don't you, if, if you do, come on, come on forward. If you have something to add.
It was just, it was just a comment. I mean, I've witnessed a lot.
And we asked, we did one-on-one going around saying, hey, we're trying to help improve transportation services. That was one thing. And then you guys were there with your big sign. And we would tell people, will you come over and tell us where you'd like to see a stop? And I don't think you got one pin in that stupid sign. So I will fully vouch that we are all collectively trying to get information and it's like pulling teeth. And, you know, we did a printed survey, we did the online survey, we did the one-to-one surveys, we sent them to our partners who, you know, help people who need help with rent and utilities and things like that. And we asked them to talk to people and it, it's just been really hard. And maybe some funding for a really great survey would be an idea.
We're, we're all, we're trying, believe me, we're trying. I don't know what else we can do. If you have any ideas, what else we can do, we'd be happy to do it.
All right, well, thank you all very much for all the information. Appreciate it. All right. Next, communications and reports. Council?
I'm going to jump in and just say what a difference a week makes in our weather. So thank you to all the city staff and public services and everybody, the emergency personnel that have responded over the past week of strange weather. Here we are at 60 degrees when I walked into this meeting and this time last week, everything was completely closed down due to ice. So thank you, everybody with the city staff. You guys did a tremendous job keeping up with some pretty wacky weather stuff in the past week.
I am not on a formal city. It was through my, one of my service clubs that I'm in, but I got to tour Procter and Gamble and I had mentioned to the mayor and Dan, amazing facility. It's actually two plants in one. We had heard some rumors that there was less production and more R and D and, and it couldn't be further from the truth. They are producing 18 million diapers a day, 180,000 cases of paper towels a day. Over 50 trucks are going out a day on the paper division. Over $30 million in salary is being paid to employees out of that facility. And it was just amazing. And, and they're working with the CTC on an apprenticeship to hopefully produce, you know, 100 new apprentices to be working out there in that, in, in both plants under the, they've been here since 1969. And that was just the, the diaper division. And then in 1997, expanded into their, the other plant. And I thought it was interesting that they said out of all of the diapers that they produce in the United States, 80% of them are made between one plant in Pennsylvania and Cape Girardeau. So 80% of all of them. And so I was just, it was great to, great to see, great to hear. The plant manager spoke very highly of Cape Girardeau and the quality of life that he has here. And I was pretty impressed since he was from Manchester, England. And so loved Cape Girardeau, and so that was pretty cool. Other thing, I want to send a special, we're getting to the end of the season, and Doug, I want to just commend Josh Meyer on the basketball league. I know with the Cape Public Schools, there are 20 more teams than they've ever had. I think there was 130 basketball teams from third grade up to eighth grade. Is that correct? So I just, I really want to commend him. I know that's a lot to, to coordinate with between Shawnee Park, Sportsplex, Osage Arena, and all that, and he's, he seems to be doing a really good job, so please send a thank you to him. That's all I've got, ma'am.
Anyone else? Moving on, we have some items for discussion. I'm sorry, did you have a comment? Okay, sorry. Is there anyone in the audience here to appear as an advisory board applicant? Sure, please state your name and, and use the microphone there so the folks can hear you.
Hi, Andrew Strawski. 131 Winterfield Circle, applied for, I guess it was Thursday, a Justin Ford Board of Appeals and a historic residential board. And that's to be involved in the community and to get everyone on the same page. And since I'm up here, I'll just say, Dan, keep on saying what you're saying, nobody's gonna stop by washing their hands and all that. We need it.
I was wondering if anybody noticed that this is the first time, first time in years.
Now I'm not going to wash my hands tonight, Dan.
I know. Friendly reminder.
Thank you, Ms. Strawski. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Haskin, we have the consent agenda review.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. We have several items for your review tonight, several performance agreements. And we'll start at the top at number seven, a request to terminate an LNI agreement with Simo Children's Museum. Number eight, an amendment to the LNI agreement with Brennan Tote to install improvements in the right-of-way adjacent to 101 William Street. Number nine, we have a supplemental agreement with Bacon Farmer and MoDOT for Project TAP, King's Highway, Cape Rock Drive, those sidewalks, what we're talking about. Number 10, we have an agreement with INT, with IT Technologies for the cured-in-place pipe project. And of course, number 11, we're ready to release the performance agreement for Baldwin Place Phase Three, another release request for Lyman East Subdivision. And of course, number 13, another release request for Touchdown Ridge, number two. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We will now move into regular session. Mr. Taylor, can you do the roll call?
Mark Bliss.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Dan Preston.
Here.
Tamika Randall.
Here.
Nate Thomas.
Here.
Shannon Truxell.
Here.
Thank you. Counsel, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
Submove.
Second. Ms. President, Ms. Randall, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor then of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Agenda carries. We have no public hearings tonight. We have a consent, a lengthy consent agenda. Good luck, Mr. Young, take it away.
Bill 2305, an ordinance accepting easements from San Antonio Church in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2305, an ordinance accepting easements from San Antonio Church in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2306, an ordinance approving the record plat of Stevens subdivision. Bill 2306, an ordinance approving the record plat of Stevens subdivision. Bill 2307, ordinance permitting Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding marijuana facilities cultivation of marijuana. Bill 2307, ordinance permitting Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding marijuana facilities cultivation of marijuana. Bill 2308, an ordinance permitting Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding criminalization of marijuana. Bill 2308, ordinance permitting Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding the criminalization of marijuana. Bill 2307, oh nine, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the Jefferson Swimming Pool Operations Agreement with the Cape Girardeau Public School District in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2309, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the Jefferson Swimming Pool Operations Agreement with Cape Girardeau Public School District in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2310, a resolution authorizing the city manager to terminate an existing LNI agreement with Southeast Missouri Children's Museum for 101 William Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2311, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the License and Tenancy Agreement with Brennan Tote for installation improvements in the right-of-way adjacent to 101 William Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2312, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute supplemental agreements with Bacon Farmer, Woodland Engineering and Testing, Inc., and the Missouri Department of Transportation for testing improvements in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2313, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Instaform Technologies USA LLC for the cured-in-place pipe project in the city of Cape Girardeau,
All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Guard, Mr. Bliss, any other discussion? All those in favor then of the consent agenda, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We have four new ordinances tonight. As always, we will ask our staff to come forward and present kind of an explanation, and then at that time, if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to make a comment or, or pose a question, they may do so, and then the council will discuss. First, we have Bill 2314, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a design-build agreement with KCI Construction Company for the new passenger terminal project at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. This is the first reading. Ms. Amos.
Good evening. So it's just as the title stated, it's a contract with KCI Construction. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been working with them to finalize the scope and make sure the contract addresses all the items that we had listed in the basis of design. So we are now at that point. Once the contract is officially approved, then we will move forward with the design charrette, where we will get into more of the aesthetic looks of the facility.
So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a comment? All right, counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2314?
Submove.
Second.
Bliss, Ms. Truxell, thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment that I wanted to thank the city staff, and particularly Katrina for all of her hard work, and, and the airport board for all the hard work on, on getting this together. I think it's a great project, and I think we got a good contractor.
I do, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing none then, all those in favor of Bill 2314, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Next, Bill 2315, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of temporary construction easements and rights-of-way from various property owners for the Minnesota Avenue and Highway 74 project in the city of Cape Girardeau. First reading. Mr. Pulli.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, Dr. Haskin. This ordinance allows the staff to negotiate with the property owners for the right-of-way for this project. This is the addition for the new roadway for, for the city.
Does anyone in the audience care to comment? Yes. Okay, would you mind coming forward and, and sharing your name and, and address and?
Hi, I'm Lisa Green, and I'm a property owner of 1218 College, and I'm going through legal dispute about my property, and I oppose it.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Could I ask why?
My question would be if there's a legal dispute, I'm sorry.
I don't believe that involves the city.
Well, it actually does.
Could you explain a little further on why you dispute and legal dispute? Just curious.
Okay, I gotta have a tap from Unity House, and they're trying to take it away from me. I wasn't behind on my payments or nothing, and I did a legit foreclosure, and I got a case going to Supreme Court now because it's not right. And there's a codicat was kind of built or whatever on Park Street. And, and Al Sprowding, when he was mayor, he got away with, oh, well, he took the people's interest away, so allowed him to get the codicat. Now, this is all going towards the 74 project, I'm, I'm sure.
So your, your property is on College Street?
Yes.
Which is actually not contained in this, in this discussion tonight. That's kind of a separate issue altogether. This is really pertaining just to the, the, basically west of that area, correct? The, the construction?
This is at Minnesota Avenue and Highway 74 intersection.
It'll be a new In-N-Out?
Yes, it is.
In that area?
It goes from Minnesota right to Shawnee Park.
Sorry, you live east of Weston Boulevard, correct?
Well, Weston's here, and Shawnee's where he's talking right there. There's intersection right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Weston's here, College is here, and the new Minnesota, they got a new College Street going all the way through from the.
Correct.
Park.
That's okay. Yeah. But you're on College.
Yeah.
And, and all, all I'm saying is, this is, yes, it's all part of the same issue, but it's, it doesn't really pertain to.
To College.
This agreement and, and Minnesota Avenue and the In-N-Out off of Shawnee Parkway. That's what this is pertaining to.
With due respect, it's a lead into it, though. It may not be now, but then later on.
And there may be, there may be some further discussion that we might have in the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good luck, ma'am. Yes, okay. I, I understand. Okay, so this agreement, Mr. Pulli, specifically, though, is regarding west of there, west of College Street, we're talking about Minnesota Avenue and the In-N-Out.
Yes, ma'am. This allows us to negotiate with the property owners just for the temporary right-of-way for the construction of it. This allows city staff to speak with the owners of the property and to talk with them about the right-of-ways.
Okay.
And this is at Minnesota Avenue to Highway 74, that one small section at that one area.
Got it. Thank you.
Submove.
Counsel, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Bliss? Motion, yes?
I motioned.
Oh. Mr. Guard, Mr. Preston, sorry, thank you. Counsel, any other discussion? All right. All in favor then of Bill 2315, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2316, an ordinance approving the record plat of the Meadows of Whispering Oaks, third? First reading. Mr. Shiplin.
Good evening. This is just a record plat to split one lot into two residential lot.
How boring. But important. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? Okay, counsel, is there a motion to approve?
Submove.
Mr. Bliss, Mr. Preston, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Bill 2316, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And lastly, we have Bill 2317, an ordinance approving a second amended and restated redevelopment agreement between the city of Cape Girardeau and Rust Communications Incorporated. First reading. Mr. Pulli.
Thank you again. This is for the property of what everybody knows as Broadway and, and Middle. This is Scott Hall. This will allow the developer to collect the interest on the TIF project. That's what the ordinance is for. Mark Grimm is here, if you have any financial questions or what goes on with the actual TIF itself. He was more gracious to sit down with staff earlier this afternoon, go over this TIF and a lot of other TIFs. And if you have any questions regarding it, he was very gracious to be here tonight.
Thank you. Can we go ahead and call Mr. Grimm up? I've already warned him. We're gonna have some, we're gonna have some questions. We're very thankful that you're here. If you would please just kind of start with some, any thoughts you might have about, about this?
Sure, I'm Mark Grimm with Gilmore &amp; Bell. We act as a special counsel to the city on economic development matters and bond counsel. So basically, what the city has traditionally entered into redevelopment agreements with developers that provide for reimbursement of, of costs of redevelopment over the, the TIF period. Frankly, that's been a good deal for the city for, for these various agreements because it's more customary in the state for the developers to get reimbursed for interest plus the out-of-pocket cost. Because, you know, you, you all hear about the, you know, cost of funds or the, you know, present value of, of funds, and, and so interest expense is a legitimate cost. In this case, it's, it's provided for, specifically provided for in the redevelopment plan that, that was approved by the council. So I, I, I feel, I don't feel like it's an unreasonable request of, of, of the developer to request interest on, on this project, given the significant amount of, of money that was spent on this project over and above the estimated project costs originally, and the sales projections, the project's new, but the sales projections are coming in, or sales revenues are coming in significantly higher than, than projected. So that's a very high-level overview of a complicated subject. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
First, I would ask, is there anyone in the audience who has a comment or a question pertaining to this? Okay, well, why don't we get it on the table? Is there a motion to approve?
Submove.
Mr. Preston? Ms. Truxell, thank you. Okay.
You're welcome.
Counsel.
I just, I just had a question. Is, Mark, is, is that affect the timeline, right? I mean, how long a period of time or not?
Well, TIF lasts for 23 years.
Right.
And, and so the, the question is, and, and at the end of that 23-year period, it goes away whether that full amount is reimbursed or not. And so because the, you're paying more debt service, and yes, theoretically, it would, if revenues are sufficient to repay that, then yes, it will extend out the period of time slightly by the additional interest amount.
Any idea how much, how much extended period of time?
Go ahead, I don't have that in front of me.
We did some calculations, and it's about $116,000 is what it'll come to.
Well, I mean, the annual, the annual revenue on that was projected at.
Three million first, and now the.
Well, but, but the annual debt service on that is going to be several hundred thousand dollars a year, so it, a few months.
Okay, that's, that's all I was getting at. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grimm, I had a question. So the, the difference, the adjustment basically to, to create this new amended agreement is simply to, to add the, the interest into the.
That's correct.
Agreement, yeah.
That's correct.
And, and that's a very normal TIF agreement?
You know, if, yes, it is. It's very common. I, I don't recall in any other city in the state having an agreement that did not provide for reimbursement of interest on top, on, on top of the out-of-pocket capital expenditure.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Okay. Hearing none, then, all in favor of Bill 2317, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grimm. We do not have any appointments tonight. Just a little bit of other business. First, I need to announce that the start of the 45-day review period is beginning for the supplemental actuarial valuation of public safety department splits on the logger benefits. Did I, Mr. Young, did I sufficiently do my duty there in, in announcing that?
The report is available for inspection at the office of the city clerk during the 45-day period.
Thank you. The report is public information and is available for inspection at the office of the city clerk. Thank you. Under other business, then, we also have several people who have pre-registered to speak to the counsel. During this time, members of the public can, can pre-register and, and come speak on something not on the agenda, and you have three minutes to do so. We have two people who have signed up. First, Ms. Cynthia Dergan.
Hello, Gan. Pardon my voice, I've been quite ill, so I may not be as mellifluous and pleasant to listen to as usual. My name's Cynthia Dergan. I live at 2824 Oakshire Circle, and I'm here to speak for Street Level Cape Girardeau, an organization concerned with homelessness and the lack of the city's response to it. I'd like everyone to think about where you were Christmas Eve, the day before Christmas, where you slept. I'd like you to remember how cold it was when you left your nice warm house and went out and scraped the ice off of your car. out and scraped the ice off of your car. I'd like to know, I'd like you to know where people were who didn't have a home. Together, Community Partnership, CP-CMO, and Street Level put 25 people into hotels. CP-CMO paid for two nights, Street Level paid for four nights, and then both of us were broke. Our hoteling budgets were blown out by that. Let me tell you about some people who didn't make it into the hotel. I've learned some of their stories since then. Two people stayed illegally in basements of empty buildings. One of them actually broke into the building because he thought maybe there was still some heat in it. Two people stayed with friends, and I know that sounds lovely, but let me tell you, in the past, some of these staying with friends situations, you better put the word friends in quotation marks because they have involved exchanging sex or using all of the guests' food stamps to supply the cupboards of the host or coercion for the person who was trying to get out of the damn cold to participate in an illegal check fraud scam. Well, people shouldn't do them illegal things, should they? But there is no legal place for a homeless person in this city to lay down their head because this city has a law that you cannot sleep on public property, you cannot tent on public property, you cannot camp, and you are forcing people to break a law to stay alive. You have created a law that makes it illegal for people to stay alive if they can't pay for a home and you are perpetuating it.
Thank you, Ms. Durkin. I will remind everyone, uh, that people in this, in this, uh, the audience members who speak in this section of our meeting, um, are, uh, sharing their opinion. Uh, the council is not permitted to respond back. So lastly, we have Mr. Andrew, Andrew Ostrowski.
Okay, Andrew Ostrowski, 131 Wichita Circle. Uh, three things basically. One, um, there's this discussion about R1 to go into R4. And since I feel like, um, was it something like, uh, playground duty in a school and two, he, he said this, so while I'm, what I'm hearing is that the city council is being asked to decide between R1 and R4 zoning. I'm thinking maybe create another zone, what would be, I call R4R with restrictions. Like because, um, they were talking about the four acres. If that was a lake, would these people have issues with that? Well, why not take the acres, in my opinion, but, uh, no, fencing up, but the dirt against it, like evergreen trees there, so, you know, they, they're not looking at that. So I'm just saying, consider, uh, R4R, making a zoning like that with restrictions. And that way they could meet together, hold parties and try to come to an agreement. I got two more, is that okay?
Till the bell rings, sir. Keep going, yeah.
You want to ring the bell on the other two?
Nope, you got, you got three minutes total.
All right, um, I think that, um, I don't know if it's going on or not, but I think the city and county really has to, uh, prepare for disasters if s- something major happens. And I don't think the city or county is ready of like, like 400 or 40,000 people start calling one time, sending assistance. Preparation is very, very important. Like, uh, when we had these, uh, about two and a half years ago, these rides, I would, if I'm, um, like Perrville, Cape Jackson, I'm putting a throw box, I don't know if they did that from the interstate unless you have a proper ID to come in, that you live here. That way you can eliminate, uh, people from outside the area during, uh, destruction. Okay? It's a lot, really, that should be prepared for. And then the third one, um, okay, you know, Cape Girardeau is, um, well, can I continue?
Uh, that's three minutes. Um, you can always email us if you'd like to share some more information or maybe come back next time.
Thirty seconds.
We're gonna wrap it up.
Really?
Nope, we're, we're, we're done for the evening.
All right.
Is there a motion to, and I don't think there's anything else, a motion to adjourn, Mr. Guard?
Second.
Second, Ms. Randall, any discussion? All in favor then of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.